Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Lunenburg Select Board. Today is Tuesday, June 18th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and injustice for all.
In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel, on Facebook Live on the Public Access Facebook page, and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel after the meeting. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. We're going to begin tonight with public comments. Are there any public comments from the board? Are there any public comments from the public? Christine, come on up.
Good evening. My name is Christine Foltz, 284 Lancaster Avenue in dear old Lunenburg. I'd like to invite you all to come and see and support the Tré Bien auction, which is a showing of local artists' designs on trays. The viewing of the auction exhibit is taking place now in the Lunenburg Public Library's Wallace Community Room, the very room where the silent auction will commence on Saturday, June 22nd, which is this next Saturday, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. Please come and join the Lunenburg Cultural Council for refreshments and celebration. The Lunenburg Cultural Council asked local artists to help create artwork for Tré Bien auction so that we could find future artistic pro-- we could fund future artistic programs to benefit school purposes along with those of all ages in our community. Twenty artists created artwork on 24 trays to help support this auction. Now we need your help. Come, bid, and help fund the arts. For a bit of background, the Lunenburg Cultural Council was granted ARPA funds to bring artists from various disciplines to the Lunenburg School District. These artists interact with students from all grade levels. The programs have been a huge success in introducing practicing artists to our students, which the Lunenburg Cultural Council hopes will spark appreciation and desire to learn more about the arts in the students' future. The ARPA funds will run out at the end of next year, and the funding we receive from the state each year does not cover the costs of this type of program that we are now providing to the schools. Therefore, the Lunenburg Cultural Council decided to create the silent auction to raise funds and help continue funding art. So please come on Saturday, help support the future art in Lunenburg. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments this evening? Come on up.
Good evening. My name is Tim Hillman. I played basketball on this floor. My brother and I own 93 acres of land, which was part of our mom and dad's homestead. The land is located at the intersection of Leominster Road and Kilborn Street and runs all the way back to Massapack. That land is under a 61B restriction, and we are selling two of the lots and conveying a third to my daughter, our daughter, my wife and my daughter. On May 15th, our attorney sent a notice to the town under the statute, letting you all know of our intent to sell the land and to convert the third lot to our daughter's use. My request is if you could all set a, please set a hearing so that we could move this forward. We, with respect to the two lots, the statute requires us to, you all, to set a hearing. With respect to the third lot, I think the time within which you all had the opportunity to ask for your own appraisal has passed, and if you could just sign the notice of intent, we could actually convey that land. The 93 acres with the six acre, with the three lots, will still have 88 acres that'll be under 61B. Thank you. Any questions?
I don't, but thank you for your public comments, Mr. Hillman. But if anyone wants to say anything in response to that, they can. Look at the town manager.
I would just ask the town manager, I haven't seen anything. Have we received anything?
We did. It was sent to town council for review as per our policy.
Oh, okay.
And we just got back something from town council.
It was sent May 15th.
Yeah.
Okay. That's just the intent, so we have 120 days.
Yep, I understand. Just understand. Thank you. I have to say--
And it will be scheduled for the July 19th meeting.
Oh, is that what you're expecting?
Yes, so our policy is it has to get sent to town council to make sure it meets the requirements of law and what the notification processes. We wait for town council's response in that to make sure the meeting, the notice meets those requirements before moving forward. We've received comments back from the planning board and conservation, which they also all received the notice, and then a hearing date is scheduled.
So is it the expectation that July 19th would be the hearing?
9th.
July 9th? Great, thank you. I'm, as a point of personal privilege, I'm proud to say I was your town council for over 12 years in the 80s, so it's good to be home. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Hillman. Are there any other public comments this evening? Mr. Skoll and Brini?
Tony Skoll and Brini, 5 Valor Road. I'm speaking here today as the Chair of the Architectural Preservation District Commission. On behalf of Richard McGrath, I know there was some confusion at last week's meeting in terms of his appointments. He did get appointed to the Historical Commission, but he didn't get appointed to the Architectural Preservation District Commission. And I've talked to Richard, and he says that, you know, he's more than willing to serve, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate the guidance and the wisdom and the experience that he brings to the table. You know, we have made some changes in the Architectural Preservation District Commission under my guidance and leadership as the Chair, but it's a reflection of people like Richard and Nathan Lockwood and William Lloyd, who have made this organization, I think, a better serving organization to the town of Lunenburg. So when you get to the appointments piece today, I hope that you'll appoint Richard to his next term. You know, we've had a vacancy for over a year. It's very difficult to get people, as you are well aware of, to find volunteers to serve on these commissions. And we got a guy here that's willing to serve. He does a great job, and I hope that you'll do that tonight, that you will appoint him. You know, he and I have had a little discussion about the Architectural Preservation District Commission. Are there any questions that you might have about what we've been up to and what we've done?
Mr. Chair, if you have questions, you can ask.
Yeah, so I reached out to Mr. McGrath, and I explained to him that I was looking, you know, I think the appointment process is a good opportunity to kind of get those updates, you know, hear what members are working on. So I did reach out to him earlier today, and I did advise him that I fully intended to support his reappointment tonight and that he and I could touch base on this. I know that he would be available on the 9th, and you know, I told him I didn't think that he needed to, you know, come in at that point. Our appointments happen in June. He's appointed till the end of June already, and I don't think it would be reasonable for there to be an expiration in that time period. So I agree with everything you're saying here tonight. Certainly, my intention was not to provide a hardship on anyone in particular. I think my question is, you know, as you guys look at what you guys are working on, I know that you guys seem to be kind of going through what looks to be somewhat of a, kind of a fresh eyes perspective. So I just wanted to ask, kind of, are you guys looking to revise any rules and regulations?
We have. They were effective May 9th, and we've actually experienced our first submittal under the new guidance, and it went like clockwork. And it actually makes it easier for the town residents to use the architectural preservation bylaw to preserve their houses. We've received a second one, a second request for review, and unfortunately, that individual didn't look at the website and didn't realize that he had a shorter, briefer way to get our review and a response, and unfortunately, it cost him $65 because he submitted his application for a certificate to alter, which wasn't necessary under the revised guidelines that we've implemented effective May 9th. One thing that I might mention is we are very concerned about both this building and Ritter Memorial Library in terms of the work that was scheduled to be done. You know, there are two projects that have been set forth for both of these projects. The project for this building came in well over budget, and we've been querying Chris Ruth as to what the next step would be. And there hasn't been a bid on Ritter Memorial Building, you know, since we went through the discussion at the September or the November 2022 town meeting and the whole discussion about windows. But I'm pretty sure that the current amount of money authorized by the town for Ritter isn't going to be enough to get a successful bid. And the end result is that we now know that to be true for this building, and nothing has moved forward with regards to a rebid or a reappropriation of money to make sure that we can get these repairs done. And the Ritter, I think, is actually in more danger of what we like to call in the business of, you know, demolition by neglect or by delay. In fact, we have an issue that we've been working with the property owner on Main Street, whose building is starting to show some signs of deterioration, and we have approached him. We've been working with him to try and find vendors who could do the work on his building. Yet here has, here are two town buildings that are kind of suffering the same, you know, demolition by neglect. And I really think it's critical that we get, in particular, the Ritter Building, moving forward. You know, get a revised estimate, understand how much it's really going to cost to do this, to do the work at the Ritter Building. You know, those estimates were prepared well before COVID, and they were appropriated, you know, at the very beginning of COVID. And I can assure you, based on what we saw for this building, there's not enough money in that project, the appropriations, to do Ritter. So unless there's some movement forward, we can't even go off for bid, you know, at the Ritter Memorial Building. Now, there's a couple of things over there that really trouble me as a person who's interested in historic preservation. We have, believe it or not, rubber-lined wooden gutters on the old Ritter Building. And we also have storm windows, which are in a very sad state of repair. We have some windows that have no storm windows, some windows that have half a storm window. And while we've agreed that the windows are going to be replaced by the town, the wood where the windows will sit and is currently suffering, you know, damage from, you know, water and rain and other things, you know, affecting that wood, that wood's not getting replaced. So when the new windows are actually being installed, there may be more work required than what's currently in the statement of work. You know, so I really, you know, from my perspective as the Architectural Preservation District Commission Chair, I really think that we need to take a look at both of these buildings and do it fairly quickly. We've had a lot of discussion about both of these buildings at the Architectural Preservation Commission meetings. You know, we went to an override vote, so to speak, on the windows associated with the Ritter Building, and it's time to get something done. I'm going to make one suggestion. You know, the town struggles to get tasks done, and I think Selectwoman Emke mentioned last week a number of items that need to be done. And I think that one of the things that I would like for the town to explore, and I'm willing to work on this, you know, to do the research, is that in my life previously, we established what was called a job order contract. And Selectman Jeffries, you may have heard that term while you were in the Army. Selectman Ruzzello, you may have heard that term. Job order contracts are where a town goes out, or an organization goes out, and it buys a level of services that's put into like a bid book, and the contractor now has a way of doing anything that you want them to do. So for example, you would write a task order to your job order contractor, and he would come back with an estimate as to what those tasks were. The Air Force, the Army, the Marines, the Navy, they have all used job order contracts to decide on how to deal with small but necessary construction work, you know, that's short of the massive military construction program work. I actually, I've begun doing some research to see if Chapter 30B would allow for a job order contract. I don't know if that's the case. It'll require more research. You know, certainly, you know, bidding for the federal government is always different than bidding for a local government like Lunenburg. But if you can grab some of those techniques and apply them at the local level, you can get things done like the Ritter Building and the Town Hall project. So with that, I'll conclude my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair?
I would just encourage, I think that, you know, the APDC typically, a lot of people watch, many people watch Select Board meetings. I think it may be helpful for you to reach out to the Chair and perhaps schedule a time to give kind of the highlight updates of what the changes from previous were, so that way the community can be aware and informed, so that way they don't run into complications as they go forward.
I will do that, but also one of the other things that's on our to-do list, and hopefully we'll approve the language, we want to notify every property owner in the Architectural Preservation District that they live in an Architectural Preservation District. You know, there are a lot of people that don't know that, you know, and they've bought homes in the Architectural Preservation District. So that's our major topic of discussion at our meeting in July, is to get the language of that letter, that notification, done, and then to distribute it to the 300-odd property owners that are in the Architectural Preservation District, just to say, you live here, this is some of the requirements, you know, there's a bylaw that governs how you modify your work. We're here to help that process, and here's our architectural preservation guidelines, and refer to our website as a place to look for that information, and make this whole process easier to do. So I completely agree with you. We'll get with you and brief you on what we've been up to, and hopefully get the residents advised as well. Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Skoll and Brini. Are there any announcements this evening? Any communications from other boards? Sorry, what? Are you here for the request?
Yes.
For the seven, okay, we're not there yet. We'll get there, though. Yep? All right, no worries. All right. So we're going to move into our 7:15 appointment, the public hearing for the application for an all-alcohol general on-premises license and automatic amusement device license for Powell's Golf Lounge LLC, doing business as Blue Sky Golf, located at 5 Summer Street, Unit 1. So I will invite the owners up, if they are here, to introduce themselves and tell us a little bit about the business they want to start.
Hello, I'm Justin McDonald.
Darren Storms, 35--
Hold on one second. I apologize. So to the clerk, I forgot about the public hearing notice, if you don't mind reading it.
Sure. The Lunenburg Select Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 18th, 2024, at 7:15 p.m. in Town Hall, 17 Main Street, second floor, Lunenburg MA, on the application submitted by Powell's Golf Lounge LLC, DBA, Blue Sky Golf, for an all-alcoholic beverages, general on-premises license, and an automatic amusement device license, located at 5 Summer Street, Unit 1, Lunenburg, Massachusetts. The premises described as a 2,141 square foot unit with basement with one entrance and exit containing a bar and seating area, three golf simulator areas, and storage.
All right, I'm sorry about that. Go ahead.
No worries. Basically, we're taking our business from Westminster and moving it to Lunenburg. We're an indoor golf facility up there, and it's a much better location.
All right, so can you just tell us a little bit more about the business? What's there?
Basically, we have, we have three golf simulators up in Westminster. We only have space for two in Lunenburg, so we're just going to install the two there. Small bar, small seating area. Basically, we attract people that want to better their golf game.
All right.
And who doesn't?
Right.
So I'll just open it up to the board for questions, if they have any, starting with Selectman Emke.
Can you come back?
Yeah, sure. Selectman Alonso.
So what is the seating capacity or occupancy of the building?
Forty-nine.
And how long have you been in business in Westminster?
Six, seven years, since 2018.
Any incidents?
None.
And what are the hours going to be? I'm looking for that right now, but--
We haven't really sat down to go over the hours yet because we've got quite a bit to do before we get to that point. Typically, we open up eight, nine o'clock in the morning. A normal, normal day in the wintertime, we're done by 10:30, 11 o'clock at night. I don't know if that'll change here because, you know, population up there is really small, we're way off the beaten path down here. That could change. We just haven't, honestly, we just haven't sat down and talked about it yet.
Do you propose or predict it'll be seven days a week?
In the wintertime, yes, probably.
No more questions, Mr. Chair?
All right. Selectman Moore?
So the application is for three simulators, but you only had the space to install two? Is that what?
No, the application is for two.
I think I see three.
Yeah, I see three, too.
It was three that was on the application.
We had, we had talked about doing a pool table, but we've taken that off. So if that was included as a--
Yes, it was included.
Sorry.
All right. Selectman Jeffries?
Yeah, I have a couple, several questions, actually. So I'm trying to get back to where your exhibits are. So you provided in your application, let me just go to find it again here, and just to the booth, we're getting a little bit of feedback in the room. So when we look at your application, you have multiple exhibits, and in our drive, this is called the Powell's Golf Lounge Building Plans. And so I'm trying to understand from which one we're looking at, because part of this approval process is approving your floor plan.
Like Exhibit A, B, and C?
So you have Exhibit A, B, then you have kind of what looks like engineering plans on a fourth page that don't look anything like Exhibit A and B. So I'm just trying to get a better understanding of--
A and B would be some plans that we had originally set forth to the plant, not building, land use. So I just automatically submitted those in there, but there is, there should be an updated set of plans in the building.
If I just turn this around, so this is listed as--
No, that's not us. That would be us, but it's already changed.
All right. So this, which is Exhibit B, and then we have further down--
Those are the actual plans.
Okay. So what looks to be the engineered or construction drawings?
Yeah, I think the, after we got an architect in there, we looked at everything. There's just no way to fit the three in. So we reconfigured. Bathrooms are a little bit too small. We wanted to have two that were ADA, so we put a little bit bigger bathrooms in to accommodate.
Okay. So part of this approval process is approving your floor plan, it's also approving your hours. So what are the hours? I know you said you haven't gotten that far, but in order for us to issue an alcohol license, which is what you're asking for, we have to put some times on it. So what are the times that you're looking for?
What would be the allotted times?
Off the top of my head, I don't know how early you can serve, if it's 8:00 a.m. or 9:00 a.m., but I think generally townwide, most people have a license from about 11:00 a.m. or 10:00 a.m. until about 10:00 or 11:00 p.m. So it varies by business.
So just looking at the hours of operations on this that we have for your certificate here, so your hours of operation are 8:00 a.m. to 12:45 a.m., Monday through Wednesday, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m., Thursday through Saturday, and then noon to 12:45 a.m. on Sunday.
That's the maximum extent.
That's the maximum extent.
No, I think I just got those numbers off of the internet telling me what hours that I could sell.
I see.
All right, so is your intent to be like a full-fledged bar, like open till 2:00 a.m.?
So our intent is to teach people how to golf. The bar is there for people that would like a drink while they're doing this.
All right, so we can assume that most people aren't going to be learning how to golf at 1:00 in the morning, right?
Correct.
So what is--
But I mean, at the same time, there are people that work second shift, they come in, that's the only time that they have allotted to do things. That would be the reasoning for that.
I think what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to get at is what are the hours that you're looking for? That, you know, if you want, if you're functioning as a bar, like till, you know, 1:45, I don't have a problem with that. But if you're functioning as a, you know, golf training area with alcohol as a side, it's your business, and maybe there are customers who come out at 1:00 a.m. in the morning who do that.
I would do it as late as we could, and then depending on the, how many people come in, how busy we actually are, could always scale back. Depending on how, how much people are interested in golfing.
Got it. Okay.
But I can tell you, for the most part, we were done by 11 o'clock at night.
Yeah, Westminster, we--
And what is, what is your--
I just don't know. I don't know, like the demographics have changed down here.
And this is right on the Pittsburgh-Leominster line?
Correct.
What is, what is your experience, either both of you, serving alcohol?
We're both TIPS certified. We've both bartended. We both work our business, so--
And have you ever had any violations from the licensing authority?
None.
Have you ever held a license from a licensing authority?
No, we worked under the Westminster Golf and Country Clubs license.
Okay.
We were renting space from them, working under their license.
So this is your first time, is this your first time getting an alcohol license to serve?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
I want to go back to Selectman Emke.
So your current business in Westminster, does that serve, does that serve alcohol?
Yes.
So does that mean you have to be 21 or older to go in and play and use a simulator?
Uh, no.
Okay, just, just to be served at the bar?
Yes.
I think that begs another question, which is how do you identify who's of age, who has a tab open, who's not?
IDs.
So you ID 100% of the time?
Absolutely, yeah.
So our alcohol policy requires you to have a written alcohol policy? Do you have a written alcohol policy?
We just follow the TIPS program that is provided to us for our certificates, which has, you have to keep logs, you have to do shift changes, what happened during the shift change. Both people have to be talking to each other.
Yep. Do you have that as a written policy, then?
We could write up the policy easy enough. Basically, when I submitted my paperwork, that was to be provided afterwards.
Okay, so at this time, you don't have a written policy, but you can prepare a written policy?
Yeah.
All right, so I would recommend that we continue the hearing to give them an opportunity to write their policy and also to get your hours of operations settled, if that's something that you guys want to do as well. How does the board feel about that?
I'm ready to vote tonight. I'm fine with where they are.
Okay.
I think it should be contingent on the license, being handed over to them should be contingent on their policy, but I'm not going to hold up the license.
We would have absolutely had all of that done. It's not, there's a checklist mile long of things that you have to do before we can get to this point. Those were put on the back after you come in front of--
Yeah, I mean, our alcohol policy, I would support continuing. I think your business model sounds great. I have absolutely no conflict with your business whatsoever. You know, I think that we typically want to review what your alcohol policy is. There's many businesses in town that have them. I'm sure that our office can provide you one so that you can kind of model off of.
I'm sure they literally just probably copy and paste right off of ServSafe.
I'm sure many of them do. Nonetheless--
That's exactly what we followed for the last six years.
Yeah, so my, my position is that, you know, our rules as a licensing authority is that we require for there to be a written alcohol policy, for all, for that policy to be-- is that we require for there to be a written alcohol policy, for all, for that policy to be inspectable by the board or our agents, which means at any point in time, the police can show up and look at that policy that is posted in a public area or available at least to your staff. And that failure to have that policy is a violation and it can then result... So that's why, for me, I think that that policy is critical.
I would say the same as Tom. I mean, you still hold all the cards. We don't have a license yet. Whatever you want, we'll do.
All right. That's, that's my position, Mr. Chair. I think I support the application. You know, I think we should review the policy before we approve it and contingent, but, you know.
All right. So I'll ask the other members of the board. Selectman Moore?
I have no problem issuing it with the contingencies that they provide those documents.
Okay. And Selectman Emke?
Is there any time? Are you under any time constraint?
We're pushing to get open, if that's what you mean.
How fast are you looking to get open with construction?
We're really trying to be open by August. Our busy time starts in October, so we'd like to work out any kinks that we have before that time hits.
So it sounds like just getting the paperwork in place, crossing the Ts, dotting the Is, would be a couple weeks to do that? Our next meeting's a couple weeks?
Probably drop it off Monday.
Did I have a meeting until July 9th?
Yeah.
Yeah. So our next meeting would be on July 9th. So we would basically continue this conversation during that meeting?
So Building Department is contingent with us getting approval from you.
Okay.
So I can't do anything in that building until I get approval from the board.
With the alcohol license?
Correct.
The Building Department, construction?
Building Commissioner is asking us to not do anything until we get approval from the Board of Health, a license, and approval from Board of Health. Those two things are contingent with him approving his...
Is that typical?
I would assume our Building Commissioner knows the Building Commissioner rules. I'm not a Building Commissioner, so...
I think Brian's probably in his, he's probably in his rights to do those.
Yeah, I mean, if we then, yeah, I hate to hold up construction. We approve contingent on having this paperwork being completed and dropped off?
But, so, I mean, let's talk about that contingency. So who provides that review that we would not provide as a licensing authority, a review of their alcohol policies? That we would delegate that to someone else? Is that what's being suggested?
No, we can review. Would that be sufficient for the Building Commissioner? If we, in principle, approve the license contingent on receiving the...
Policy.
The requested, yeah, documentation?
You can hold the actual, I mean, you'll have to hold the actual license as well until it goes through ABCC and gets the state approval. So you can make that contingency...
I don't doubt that they're going to have the, you know, have the paperwork.
Between now and then.
I guess the question, the question I have is the exact question that Select Board Member Emke had, which is will us approving the license but not handing it over until we have the alcohol policy, will that be sufficient for the Building Commissioner so they could go ahead with their plans?
That, I can't answer that question without talking to the Building Commissioner.
I believe, I believe it would be.
I can't believe it would put you in a, in a worse spot. You'd be in the very worst, it would be the same.
Yeah.
But, I mean, I would think that he would approve it at that point. It's not like we don't think we're going to get the policy.
All right. Well...
I mean, there are, there are other contingencies. Before, before you hand over our license, we have to give you documentation on insurance. We have to give you, like, there's all sorts of more stuff.
Oh, we have insurance and...
Yeah, I think we already have.
We have insurance.
I think that's why they wait until you get approved by the board, approved by the state. Then you need to provide those things, and then you can physically hand over the license.
Yep.
I think they already had that, these steps in place. I don't know. I'm sure it's been a long time since anybody's applied for a license.
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Chair. Again, I fully support the business, no conflict with the business. You know, I understand when you're trying to get things going, it's always A connects to B, which connects to C, and you've got to get A moving in order to get B and C moving. You know, I, I think we try to do a good job of making our policies available to the public. I know that our, our office provides them to applicants.
Absolutely.
And I, and I don't think that the requirements that we as a licensing authority impose are anywhere near as arduous as the, as the requirements of ABCC. That for the most part, we're looking for a floor plan, hours of operation, and an alcohol policy. I mean, if I can kind of narrow it down, that's kind of like the three main points.
Correct.
And, and you provided three floor plans, no alcohol policy, and no hours of operation. So I, I'm just in the mindset that I think we might continue it, but that's my position. And, you know, and if we come back here in three weeks, and perhaps if the Building Commissioner watches this and sees the willingness of the board to move forward, that he can take another look at what he's decided in terms of whether or not drywall and plumbing and everything else can move forward in this, in this process.
The checklist that you referred to, was that from the town?
Correct. So when you, when you go to the town and you apply, who was before Annie? I'm not sure.
Elaine.
Who is it?
Elaine.
Elaine?
Elaine Peterson.
Elaine, yeah. So she had a whole checklist written out. Justin stopped up to talk to Annie. They went through the checklist and physically she wrote down like, yes, we need, yes, we need, after approval, after approval.
But I'm assuming on that checklist wasn't a floor plan and operating hours and alcohol policy?
Uh, no. I don't, I don't know about operating hours, but I do know that there, I think there was a floor plan. But like I said, the three that we submitted were basically turned down.
Right, but...
They wanted, they wanted an architect to do the plans. So the three that got submitted, I believe they were in there just because, literally because of the land use and change of use, modification of use and all that. That's what I had at the time, so I just...
So, Mr. Chair, what I would recommend is that we look at that checklist, and if those things aren't on it, that we put those on that.
I think, I think they are on there. What I'm saying is she highlighted what she wanted and then said, after approval, you're going to need these, 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 these. So we know after approval, I'm going to need liability insurance.
We have the insurance.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I need alcohol liability insurance. I'm going to need...
Yeah, you only demonstrated workers' comp so far.
Yeah, like all of these other things. I'm going to have to provide to the town before they physically hand me the license. And I think that's what she was getting at with, with the rest of the things, like, you know, you're going to need A, B, and C. And basically, it was after approval, is what she basically wrote.
So nothing's going on right now at the location, construction-wise?
Uh, we, we started a little bit of, like, taking down the drop ceiling and stuff like that. I went over and talked to, what it was is I put the building permitted on Thursday. It was a little bit late. We did some construction over the weekend. Brian emailed me back on Monday saying, hey, you've got a few other steps you have to do before you can start this. I went in and talked to him, told him what we did. He just said, please just stop until we get these things done, then you can continue.
So it is officially stopped until you get this?
Oh, God, yeah. No, we haven't done a thing yet.
So real quick, a written alcohol policy is only submitted to us. So if we wanted to make that contingent with approval, we could. But the issue is hours of operations also have to be submitted to the state.
Yep, okay.
So we do need to have that, like, clearly defined.
Okay.
So with that information, what do we want to do? Do you want to continue the public hearing, or...
Well, if they don't have, if you're saying it has to be part of the ABCC, then...
Do we have a choice?
Right, then we can't, we can't put it forward.
All right. So it looks like we're going to have to continue this conversation at our next meeting on July 9th. So is there, were you going to say something?
I was.
Go ahead.
I was just going to ask the town manager, you know, I mean, if someone's applying for like a commercial kitchen, they have to build the commission before kitchen, before they can get the permit for the kitchen. And so it just strikes me, and I, I don't, as Mr. Alonso said, I'm not a Building Commissioner. It strikes me as a little strange that they can't move forward with any part of their construction unless they have a liquor license. I mean, there's a lot of this that has nothing to do with alcohol. You know, I, I guess what I'm asking is that there's, you know, perhaps that's a conversation that the applicant can have with the Building Commissioner again.
I've already made a note that I would follow up personally.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So is there a motion to continue the public hearing?
I move to continue the public hearing to the 7:15 on July the 9th.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, no. All right. So we will have to have you come back on the July 9th meeting. So if you can get your hours of operations defined so that we can send that to the state, and also your written alcohol policy for us to review ahead of the meeting, then we can go ahead.
Is the hours of operation that I submitted for the manager's thing, is that allowable?
Are you talking about this one right here?
Yeah.
Well, they're not really your hours of operations. They're just the total allowed, right? Isn't that what you just put down?
That's what I'm saying. Like, if they're, if they're hours of operation, we did kind of put them down.
Yeah.
If that's allowable, then that's allowable. That's what we'll go with.
Well, I would recommend just clearly defining what you actually intend your hours of operations to be. So we already voted to continue the public hearing, so we'll be here July 9th, and then we can have their actual hours then.
Can I just add, it sounded like they wanted to have the hours, because I don't know what the business is going to be like in this town, so allowing the maximum possible hours with the option to shorten.
To scale it back, yeah, that's...
I think that's, yeah.
Which I believe has been done before?
Well, it's just, it's allowable.
Yeah. You can't, you can't go beyond what you submit, but you could certainly reduce. So I don't, I don't know what was submitted.
You just said eight to 12:45, eight AM to 12:45 AM, Monday to Wednesday, and then Thursday to Saturday. It's for eight to 1:45, I believe.
And is that what we submit to the state?
And then Sunday noon to 12:45. Well, that's what we could submit to the state since that was part of their application. So I guess the answer is they did have hours of operation. If I may ask, where in the application do we see this? Can someone just point my attention to...
There's a manager's part of the application, which I gave to Annie yesterday, I believe.
Because usually we see these on one of the first pages.
I haven't been able to find it in any of these paperwork.
Yeah, I don't even, I don't see it on your application.
It's 15 pages here.
Do you have your application with you to direct us to where it's at?
I'm going for hearing. Yeah, I'm wondering if it just didn't make it in our drawing.
That's the manager information, so there's nothing on that one.
That's what you said you submitted it on?
Yeah, I don't, I'm not sure. There's a lot of paperwork there. Doesn't sound like anybody wants to do anything, so we'll come back.
All right. Well, thank you for coming in tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. So up next is our 7:35 PM appointment with the Lunenburg Democratic Party Town Committee for the request to raise the pride flag on June 23rd. So I'll invite you to come up to speak to the request.
Good evening. My name is Scott Barney. I live at 306 Whalen Road. And we're asking your approval to hoist the pride flag or the progress flag on Sunday at 12:00 noon. And for the town, if you guys agree to keep it up until sundown on Friday, next Friday.
Are there any questions from the board?
Who actually would be raising it? Would you, that's something that you guys would be doing?
I could do it. I have, I was in the service myself. I'm a U.S. Army veteran. And one of my tasks was to raise and lower the flag on the basis that I was serving on. So I can do it, with your permission, of course, with all due respect to the U.S. flag that's already flying.
Is it your intent to have an event?
No, just a gathering, no event, no speakers. I did hear through the grapevine that our state reps and our state senator might be present on that day.
They don't show up many places without talking.
Yeah, but we don't have a speaker for them.
Just to clarify, the dates would be June 23rd to June 29th?
That's correct. And if you want me to lower the flag on Friday, I could stop by after work on that Friday. Okay? So up to you guys.
I fully support the request.
This says sundown the 30th.
On June 30th, yeah. So do you want it to be on the 29th or the 30th?
The 29th is fine. That's a Friday. I don't know if, you know, anybody will make plans on the weekend and stuff like that. Because the following week is the 4th of July.
29th is a Saturday, sir.
Oh, 29th is a Saturday? Okay, good. I could do it on the 29th. I'm losing track. Do you guys see the calendar? I don't. You guys have it in front of you. I didn't want to be disrespectful and look at my phone while I'm talking to you, so... That's right. The 23rd through the 29th would be great if we could do that.
All right. Well, I don't have any questions. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the request of the Lunenburg Democratic Party Town Committee to raise the pride flag on June 23rd, to come down at the end of the day on June 29th.
Very well. And I will be on that property, so if anybody sees me, I'm not stealing anything.
Second.
Any additional discussion?
Looks like a member behind him wants to talk.
Oh. Do you want to just reiterate what he just said?
Yep. I purchased the three-by-five flag, and it's going to be donated to the town. And we would respectfully request the town to fly it the last full week of June every year, if possible.
I would discourage the town from accepting the donation of the flag. And it has nothing, you know, I'm not opposed by any means.
Right.
But I think that once we open the door to speech such as things that we might like, we open the door to the speech that we don't like.
Don't like. I get it.
And so I'd rather not get involved.
Okay, very good. I'll take the flag back.
All right, great. So the motion was made and seconded. Is there any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Thank you, you too.
You too.
All right. So our 7:45 appointment with the Sewer Commission Chair for the presentation on sewer pump station clog issues was canceled. He wasn't able to come in tonight, so we're going to move straight into interviews, appointments, reappointments, and resignations. So up first is the ratification of the town manager's appointment of seasonal lifeguard Mason Kiefer.
So Mason is new to town. His brother was recently appointed, Cole Kiefer. He does have his lifeguard certification, and this would be the last lifeguard to be appointed for the season.
Any questions for the town manager?
It's a big family affair, lots of, lots of siblings being on this lifeguarding.
Yeah. I want to say I think we're fortunate as a community, because I know a lot of communities struggle with getting hired seasonal lifeguards.
I move to rat, I'm sorry.
Good. I am accepting motion.
I move to ratify the appointment of Mason Kiefer as a seasonal lifeguard.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes. Up next is the ratification of the town manager's annual appointments. So we still have to do the special police officers and alternate building commissioner. Do you want to separate out the alternate building commissioner? And then we can do that, and then I can list through the names for the police officers.
Certainly. So the alternate building commissioner, this is a new alternate building commissioner. His name is William Heslet. He is currently the assistant building commissioner in the town of Westboro. And he has 20 years of professional construction and management experience. This would only be in instances when the building commissioner is on vacation and inspections are needed to be conducted. So he lives locally in Shirley, so he would be close by for that as well.
Any questions, or is there a motion?
I move to ratify the town manager's appointment. Let me get the name.
William Heslet.
William Heslet as the...
Alternate building commissioner.
Alternate building commissioner, thank you.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes. All right, so we'll move on to the special police officer appointments. So there are two files, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, I'm going to start off with the Shirley police officers. These will be appointed as special police officers. Chief Samuel Santiago, Lieutenant Alfreda Cromwell, Sergeant Robert Romilly, Sergeant Jesus Ostalaza, Sergeant Brandon Bruin, Police Officer Matthew Yuliano, Detective Emily Vincent, and then Police Officers Oria Rojas, Kevin Kirchdorfer, David Morrow, Angela Vargas Martinez, Alan Rice, Michael Lupacella, and David Hammack. Then let me switch over. And then for Lancaster, full-time officers Chief Everett Moody, Sergeant Christine Duggan, Sergeant Patrick Mortimer, Sergeant Frederick Hatstat, Detective Andrew Shaw, and then Officers Gary Henderson, Jose Milet, Eric Schmidt, Connor Sullivan, Adrian Godowa, and Nicholas Hatstat. Is there a motion to ratify the appointments of special police officers that I just listed?
I move that we ratify the town manager's annual appointments of the special police officers from Shirley and Lancaster as read.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes. All right, so now we're going to continue our select board annual appointments, and I believe there's two that we're able to do tonight. So the first one is Richard McGrath for APDC, and this is a term to expire in 2027, is that correct?
I move that we appoint Richard McGrath to the APDC, since I don't want to say the whole thing, and term to expire as noted by the chair.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes. So we did also have a volunteer request form for Anna Lockwood, who is going to replace one of the members whose term expired this year. It's up to us if we want to enter her, interview her for that, or if we're willing to appoint her tonight.
This is for the Council on Aging?
Yes.
Did she mention whether she wanted to be interviewed? I mean, I think everybody on this board, I think most people, I don't want to speak for the newest member, but all of us know her, so.
Yes, exactly. Well, she knew that we were going to discuss it tonight, and she's not here, so I think she's okay with us moving forward without her being interviewed, and if the board's okay with it, I am.
Then I would make a motion that we appoint Anna Lockwood to the Council on Aging, term to expire.
It's also twenty-twenty-seven?
June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-seven.
Second.
Any additional discussion?
Yes, I am going to support this nomination with the understanding that Anna Lockwood has met with the Council of Aging, that they are in agreement, that they are in support of her joining them, and that she has the support of critical members of the, that she has the support of the Chair of the Council of Aging.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes. All right, so moving on to the town manager report.
For meeting events and other announcements, town offices are closed tomorrow, June nineteenth, and observance of Juneteenth. The town beach opens up on June twenty-fourth and will close on August twenty-fifth. Hours of operation will be Monday through Friday, ten AM to seven PM, and Saturday to Sunday, twelve PM to six PM. Swim lessons will be held on weekdays. Session one will be Monday, June twenty-fourth until July fifth, with the exception of July fourth, the holiday. And session two will be Monday, July twenty-second until August second. For board committee and commission vacancies, there is one vacancy on the agricultural commission, one vacancy in the architectural preservation district commission, one vacancy on the Board of Health, which is a joint appointment with the Board of Health until the next annual town election. Now, there should be no vacancies on the Council on Aging. There are three vacancies on the cultural council, two associate vacancies on the green communities committee, one member-at-large vacancy in the open space committee, one vacancy on the parks commission, which is a joint appointment with the parks commission until the next annual town election, five vacancies on the personnel committee, two vacancies on the sewer commission, which is also a joint appointment with the sewer commission until the next annual town election. Anyone interested in any of these positions can locate the volunteer application form on the town website, complete it, and return it to the select board's office. And if you have any questions on the roles and responsibilities, you can contact our office at nine seven eight five eight two four one three zero, extension one four four. For employment opportunities for the town, there is an administrative assessing assistant position for thirty-two hours a week, the assistant to the sewer business manager, which is nineteen hours a week, interim town manager, which is contractual, land use director, which is forty hours a week, network administrator, forty hours a week, public safety desk clerk, forty hours a week, and one seasonal cemetery laborer position, and that those hours vary. Information on each of these positions can be found on the website under job opportunities. Staffing updates, since the IT network administrator has left, we have posted the position, and we have increased our service level with SUSE RIT to have one of their employees onsite five days a week. We will continue doing this until this position is filled. The conservation department regarding a backlog of applications. Recently, the conservation commission chair sent me an update of all the outstanding wetlands protection act decisions that needed to be issued by the conservation department to applicants. As of June fifth, it was estimated there were twenty-three, yet this is likely to increase as the conservation commission issues between two to three decisions per meeting. Under his new role as land use manager, Brian Gingras will begin, or has begun, working with the conservation department to put together a complete list of all filings and their statuses, and this is due back to him this Thursday. He will then meet with the conservation administrator and administrative assistant to develop an action plan with hard deadlines to address the backlog. Brian also directed the conservation department to begin using our online permitting software, OpenGov, to track all requests for determination of applicability filings starting June seventeenth, and July first is their deadline for all notice of intent filings in OpenGov. This includes entering any paper applications they receive. The current conservation administrative assistant has been working nine additional hours a week beyond her normal ten hours in order to address the administrative backlog in that office. The building department administrative assistant has also offered to assist in administrative work as time allows in her schedule. I've asked for an update from Brian after his meeting with the conservation staff this Thursday, and will share this with the board, and asked Brian to communicate the update to the conservation commission chair. DPW updates, we had a construction kickoff meeting for the Flat Hill Culvert project last Thursday, and this was led by the DPW director, and also present were our engineer representative from the fire department, the conservation administrator, and myself. The bridge is expected to be closed starting in October, when the water level in the lake is lowered, and is estimated to be closed for two months. This week, PJ Keating paved Elmwood Road from Flat Hill Road to the gravel section and West Groton Road, the section of road parallel to Route two twenty-five. The highway crew has been busy repairing road defects, using the new rotary mower on a lot of roadsides around town, cleaning catch basins, sweeping roadways, repairing signs, and more. An update on the police department mental health co-response clinician. The police department was notified this week that they received a two-hundred-and-six-thousand-dollar grant from the Department of Mental Health that will be used for personnel costs and equipment to hire a co-response mental health clinician that will be shared between the towns of Lancaster and Lunenburg. This is a two-year grant and will be in addition to the forty thousand that will come out of the opioid stabilization account towards the cost of the program. Many thanks to our police department, especially Officer Brad McNamara, who was instrumental in submitting this grant. Request for proposals and invitation for bids. On June eleventh, we received two bids for landscaping services for town properties. The bids have been reviewed, and a notice of award will be issued to Lakeview Landscaping. On June twelfth, we received one bid for the hazardous materials cleanup at the Woodruff property. The bid came in at a hundred-and-eighty-five thousand, and therefore exceeds the hundred-thousand-dollar appropriation available for this expense. The first time we bid this project, there were no bids. The town will need to make a decision on whether or not additional funds will be appropriate at a future town meeting in order to rebid this project. The facilities director, assistant town manager, and I have completed the review for the library solar shade invitation for bids, and this will be going out to bid on June twenty-sixth. The facilities director, assistant town manager, and I met last week to review all the pending projects that are in different stages of developing the bid package. For facilities, there are a total of twelve projects that need to be put out to bid once the scope of work and specifications is finished, and a full review of the IFB or RFP is done. This does not include any additional IFB or RFPs associated with the Marshall Park or any other park. Assistant town manager works with the appropriate department or board on the bid package until it gets to the point where it is ready for review, then I do a review, and any further questions or amendments are worked out between myself, the assistant town manager, and department board until it reaches final form. So this relates back to the public comment. I want to just address part of that comment made tonight by the member of the APDC for the Ritter and the town hall project. I have periodically updated the board on those projects and the status that, per the capital plan projects that for this year and previous years are outstanding. The town hall project was put out to bid, but it did exceed our appropriation, but it included the work, structural work to the tower, clock tower, which was not part of the capital appropriation. So what, the work that does need to get done related to that appropriation, and what was approved by the APDC was the roof and the chimneys. So that's the part of the project that was carved out, and that the facilities director is working on finalizing that scope. So that is close to being at a point where it will be, would be reviewed by me for that, that project. So I just want to clarify that, because the, part of the reason for that, we believe the excessive cost to that is all the structural work related to the clock tower. So, it's, it could be possible that it will exceed our appropriation, but we won't know that until we put that out to bid. The Ritter project is both the ADA ramp and the windows, and in my conversations with the facilities director, those would be bid separately, as separate projects, and they are separate capital appropriations within that year's capital plan. And the facilities director has worked with an architect on that, and all the plans are done. It's also in a stage where it's making sure the specifications are complete for that project to put out to bid, so.
So how far away from, are we from both of those projects?
I would say this building's bid package is, is much closer than the Ritter building project package. But like I said, there's twelve projects that are in the works, so it's, and obviously with my pending departure, that's going to slow.
No, I'm asking you as, as somebody who's in the office of, not that I'm asking you personally to finish these, I'm just trying to get a handle, because I think what Mr. Schoolenbrini said during public comment is true. I mean, we talk about closing these envelopes, and you, that building, it's not doing it any favors waiting and waiting, and we've really pushed the APDC to get the windows approved, which we did now, and so he's asking, okay, well, you pushed us, but we're not getting anywhere, so sooner than later.
Part of that process, though, was that architect working with the facilities director, going to those APDC meetings to make, to address their questions and develop those plans, and so that added time as well.
Right. Okay.
An update on the trash and recycling contract. Last month, the DPW director, Bill Bernard, our trash and recycling coordinator, Jamie Toll, and I met with our municipal manager from E.L. Harvey. He brought forward a proposal that was less than previously discussed as they purchased newer used trucks instead of brand-new trucks that would have driven up their overhead costs. We have reviewed the impact of this revised proposal on both the operating budget and the enterprise, which is the recycling portion, and based on our historical tonnage, the impact would exceed our appropriation. Due to this, the assistant town manager has advertised this for bids to be released on Monday, and they will be due mid-July. In the meantime, we will attempt to negotiate further with E.L. Harvey to see if we can come to a price that falls within our appropriation or get a further extension beyond September thirtieth. A carryover item from last week's report, the fiscal twenty-four fourth quarter tax bills with exemptions. A letter was sent out today to all property owners that had exemptions on their fiscal twenty-four fourth quarter tax bills to address the error in the total taxable value caused by a sequel area, error in the town's accounting software. Copy of the Vision property card with the correct total taxable value was included with the letter. All other information in those tax bills, including the payable amount, was correct. A ticket was submitted to Munis, our accounting software company, to correct this error for future tax bills with exemptions. And this would not affect the preliminaries, because those are in the, the actuals. Fiscal twenty-five Q-one and Q-two tax billing update. As discussed last week, we began the tax bill process to create the fiscal twenty-five preliminary bills this past Friday with a member of the tax team from Tyler Technologies, and as a backup, had a second outside contractor, not from Tyler, scheduled to complete the process yesterday. There were issues with the personal property file that caused errors during the process on Friday in the training environment, but the outside contractor was able to work with Tyler to complete the process for the commitment in the live environment yesterday. Tickets were created with Tyler by our outside contractor yesterday, and the process was documented as well. The finance team and I agree that we should hire this outside contractor to work with the town to perform the preliminary work to prepare sewer utility bills and actual tax bills this upcoming fiscal year. This will ensure that staff is spending, that is spending an incredible amount of time dealing with software issues and different support people at, with different support people at Tyler, is able to address their other duties that are falling behind due to the extraordinary time that has been spent on dealing with the current software company. Fiscal twenty-five grant services process, as discussed during the development of the fiscal twenty-five budget, when the idea of appropriating funds for grant services was introduced and presented, I recommended developing a process to allocate the fifty thousand dollars that was in this year's budget towards different departments, boards, and committees. The intent is so that the funds are allocated proportionally amongst the requesters. At last Tuesday, Thursday's finance committee meeting, Tiffany Tavarez offered to assist me in developing a process. I spoke with Tiffany today, and we are going to brainstorm through email. I have also reached out to my association to see if any other community has an established process or experiences to share that would inform our process.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions for the town manager?
I do. About the conservation department and the backlog of applications, is, was this due to the, the conservation administrator and administrative assistant being vacant for so long? Or is this just, are they seeing an incredible increased workload of applications? I mean, why are we? I mean, why are we, why are they twenty-three, have twenty-three applications backlogged?
I think it has to do this year's turnover in that office and coming with the newest conservation administrator coming into that situation with a, already with a backlog.
Okay. Do they have any idea how long it's going to be before they catch up and it's a normal cycle?
That's what I, I think Brian-
Okay, Brian will find out. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. So moving on to old business, up first is a discussion on tax investigation report. So it's my understanding that this will be ready for the July 9th meeting, so we can move on. So discussion on use of information-
Mr. Chair, what does that mean, ready? It's in, it's on our drive, right?
Yeah. So I was under the impression that we would actually discuss it on July 9th. And Selectman Jeffries also isn't in the room right now because he was talking to those two gentlemen, so-
I guess one question I have is, is it complete? Because there are some empty sections.
Right. I don't believe it is. So we can come back to that.
Because after it's complete, I think we're going to need a, we, that we can introduce it, but obviously, we're not going to know about it beforehand, read it, so, so, all right.
All right.
I think I hear him coming.
So moving on to discussion on use of information technologies resource policy. So I went ahead and drafted an update to that policy based on our conversation last week, so we can just go ahead and review it. So under section three, this will be subsection N, a new section, termination of access to electronic communication devices. So it reads, "Access to electronic communication devices of the town shall be terminated on the final day of employment or membership of a board, committee, or commission. If an individual remains a member of any other boards, committees, or commissions, their access will not be terminated in the case where no confidential records relating to the old position exist. The email account for any employee that is no longer employed by the town shall be turned into a shared mailbox that can be accessed by the new employee assuming that position when deemed appropriate." So the part about the shared mailbox is something that the town manager recommended. So obviously, we don't have to vote on this tonight, but this is just sort of an actual update to the policy based on the conversation that we had last week.
So I have one question. Is this, I know it relates to email, but does it also cover Google Drive, SharePoint access if you move from FinCom to another board? Does it, does it, it doesn't look like it addresses that, and my question is, does it need to? I kind of think yes.
Yes, well, yeah, that was, I was going to point out too. So I don't have any objection to the, the wording except for the first five words. Well, not even the access to, when it talks about electronic communication device, now I don't have, I'd have to look back at-
Yeah.
Do we, is it defined in the real policy what electronic communication device is?
That's a term that was used throughout the policy, so that's what I went with. And to Selectman Emke's question, no, it wouldn't just relate to email for that.
Okay, so electronic communication devices are a section. Okay, so that, okay, so that's my only, okay, so that-
But does it cover-
Instantly.
Shared, like, shared drives.
Could we just add that in?
Yeah, that's what I would probably do.
Where's the definition of, of the communication devices?
Well, it starts further up.
Yeah, so I think that electronic communication devices would have to be appended or amended to include any shared file services.
Because right now, it looks like it, it covers modes of communication only.
Which apply the devices, right.
Mr. Alonso, you're referring to section three?
Yep, yep. And in fact, what, what the chair wrote, I would probably defy, I would probably even remove devices from, just all electronic communication. You would lose access to all your electronic communication associated with your position. And that would probably be inclusive, but we should probably put a list there too. Because this is devices-
Right, it makes it-
And not the, the actual, right, and systems, not the actual communications themselves, which is equally, if not more important.
Yeah.
Okay.
Other than that, I mean, I, I also think that, just for what it's worth, again, when we talk about, if an individual remains a member of any other board, committee, their access will not be, I mean, that, that's a, I think that's problematic because we'd have to think about, it would just be easier, because if you, if you're on the planning board and you stop being on the planning board, but you are appointed to some other commission, let's say you're elected to this body or anything else, you shouldn't have access to your planning board stuff anymore. I mean, you should just have access to what you, what your current responsibility and scope is.
I'll let the town manager speak too, if she has any opinions on that.
So you're saying extracting emails related to, like, if they're no longer on that board?
Right, they should be, no, that, that email should be archived. Presumably, they went to the whole board, but anyway, they could be archived and made available to somebody to go through them. I mean, again, if I'm, if I'm on the planning board and I all of a sudden am on the Board of Health, I shouldn't have access to planning or vice versa. I mean, you just shouldn't have access to that anymore.
Does it make sense to separate out volunteers versus employees? Because the access is very different.
Yeah. And I, I thought this policy was largely employee-focused and that we had a different policy that was largely board and commission-focused. I hear Mr. Alonso saying, you know, I, I'm, the only thing I'm thinking of is like Dave Passios, who sits, who used to sit on multiple boards and committees and change them throughout the year. So we're, we're looking then at the second sentence and how we can clarify this. If an individual remains a member of any other boards, committee, or commission, their access will not be terminated in a case where no confidential records. Doesn't make sense to delete this sentence in its entirety. And, and I, to me, it, it kind of resolves the conflict.
Well, I think that the policy, somebody mentioned, I think maybe, maybe Selectmember Moore mentioned that it's really aimed at employees, or maybe Ms. Emke mentioned it. But I think that's what it is. So I don't think we should intertwine the two. So this should be about employees if that, because that's the way I got, that's the impression I got from the original IT policy, the IT policy.
So then that modification, if it were to read, "Access to electronic communication devices," however we change that phraseology, "of the town shall be terminated on the final day of employment, period. The email account for any employee that is no longer employed by the town shall be turned into a shared mailbox that can be accessed by the new employee assuming that position when deemed appropriate."
Yep.
Does that clarify and resolve the concerns?
Except maybe still adding in something about, you know, the SharePoint's or the shared drives.
Yeah, so the electronic communication device, we've got to clarify that.
Okay, sorry, the separate-
But otherwise, if we end with employment, delete everything up until email account for any employee.
Yeah, just delete the second sentence, yes.
Is, is the rest of the document also clean with respect to only referring to employees?
I was just trying to look through that, I think so.
That would, that would be the only thing I'd say is check that.
Selectman Emke, I'm sorry, would you mind saying that again? I didn't hear you.
The rest of the, as long as the rest of the document is clean and only refers to employees as well, and it doesn't intermingle, you know-
I don't think it, I don't think it mentions board committees or commissions anywhere.
Yeah, I don't remember. As I just give it one last read-through to make sure-
Well, I don't think we're vote, I think according to the chair, we're not voting on it tonight. At least, that's what I heard.
Yes. All right, this is good feedback. Is there anything else we wanted to talk about on this tonight?
But thank you for doing that.
Yeah, of course.
Before we're closed.
And the reason why I added the part for boards and commissions as well is because recently, there was a similar issue with a volunteer.
Maybe we need to discuss a separate policy or adding something to the policy specific about boards and committees. I think it's just difficult to intertwine employees.
I felt that too when I was writing it. Didn't really feel right having it all there, so I just want to at least have it in a draft for us to discuss. So if it gets pulled out and put somewhere else, you know, obviously that works too. All right, is there any other discussion?
Maybe we should even caught, entitled the, the use of information technology resources policy, and we should probably put employee in front of it.
Yeah.
So employee use of information technology resources policy. That would, once and for all, clarify it.
Yep, nope, that's a good idea. All right, anything else? All right, so moving on to the discussion on the outdoor dining policy as well. So I have a draft for this one as well. If you go to the folder in the drive and then open up Draft, Outdoor, Alcoholic Beverage Service Area Policy. So that's the terminology I went because that's how it's defined by the ABCC. So for definitions, section 1.05b, outdoor alcoholic beverage service areas, and this is all pretty much feedback that we received from department heads. So I just compiled all of it and put it into an actual policy here. There's nothing else that I actually wrote here. So, A, permanent outdoor alcoholic beverage service area shall consist of covered open-air seating and does not include enclosed structures. B, the licensing of outdoor alcoholic beverage service areas shall be exclusively granted to establishments that hold both a current and valid common Vic license and a general on-premise alcohol license. C, crash protection and pedestrian protections shall be required by any establishment requesting an outdoor alcoholic beverage service area, including but not limited to acceptable barriers that abide by height, structure, and material requirements. And D, outdoor heating elements in the service area shall be restricted to no more than two propane tanks per license. And then separately, for the application process, applicant will be required to submit a completed application, updated stamped plans, a list of all abutters within a twenty-foot radius, and a check made to the town of Lunenburg in the amount of the current fee for changes to existing licenses. Application shall list all heating sources, tents, and total capacity changes to the outdoor service area. Application will be submitted via OpenGov for approval from the Building Department, Fire Department, Police Department, DPW, and Board of Health. A public hearing will be scheduled following the approval of the aforementioned departments, and the applicant will be informed of the date, time, and location of the public hearing by the Select Board's Office. And following the approval of the Select Board, the Select Board's Office will submit the application along with a signed LLA certification form to the ABCC. No fee is required for amendments made to the outdoor service area. So this just puts all the feedback that we have so far into something that we can at least work with, so-
Mr. Chair, so I have a couple of questions. So this has to do, I mean, you put this under alcoholic beverage service area, but do, I mean, isn't it required that, unless I'm misreading something, that we have an outdoor dining policy first? Because we don't officially, I don't believe, have that. Like, don't we, but we're required to. Like, right now, people are doing it under the COVID state laws. That's what allowed it to begin with.
That expired in April.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So, so Mr. Mohammed from Il Forno provided us with that letter, so he's up in limbo because we don't have an outdoor policy. And so I don't even know if he's using, we should make it clear that until we establish one, I mean, at the very least, because I don't want to impact, negatively impact businesses, I would hope that we would vote, this board, especially with the three-week break coming up, that we would vote to at least extend the existing ones that were in place until such time as we have permanent policy. Because otherwise, what does he do? Is he allowed to serve out there? He's put a lot of money and time to do this, and now we can't even use it.
Correct.
If I may, Mr. Alonso is spot-on. I think that, you know, I, I would hope that the chair entertain a motion to extend the existing policy until such time that we have a permanent policy, a permanent written policy, because it, you know, we don't want to hurt our existing businesses. But just as a comment on, on what's written in section 1.05, as you've prepared it, Mr. Chair, you know, I, I have some concerns specifically when it comes to C and D. So, you know, crash protection is a little too vague for me, and what that means can be defined by who exactly, and those requirements can vary. And, and I, I think if we're going to say crash protection and pedestrian protection, I, I would prefer for those terms to be defined or not included. Or to make some reference to, to the satisfaction of, you know, public safety officers such as Police Department or the Building Commissioner, but, but I do think we want to define that. And then in D, you know, when we think about some larger areas, I, I don't know the benefit of two propane tanks per license. If you have an area that's, you know, a thousand square feet outdoors, two propane tanks aren't enough, you know. And, and so I think this should be scaled, and perhaps there should be feedback from the Building Commissioner and what they believe to be appropriate. Propane tanks per square footage, you know, it might be no more than one per, you know, three hundred square feet. But I, I think that this may be a little bit too broad. And then generally, you know, comments in section 1.22, which you briefly went through, you know, I understand the, the intent here, but I'm a little concerned that we've, that this may create a lot of process for a business that's already thriving, already doing well. You know, we haven't had any issues, to my awareness, we did initially at On the Rocks when they opened up and some of the residential businesses, or residential, some of the people who lived near it were a little alarmed because it was a change. But overwhelmingly, we have had no complaints from any business that has created outdoor seating. So I would hope that the process we implement would be generally similar to the one that we implemented during the pandemic. That's a lot looser, easier, and just a little less on the process side, but that's my opinion.
All right. So is there a motion to extend the temporary policy?
Yeah, I would, I mean, we have what those policies were, so I would make a motion that until such time that we implement a separate Lunenburg outdoor dining policy that for those establishments that already have established outdoor policy, outdoor seating that have been approved, that we continue under the, under the regulations that were available at the time. Again, until they're superseded by our own policy.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes. All right, so moving on to review remaining ARPA funding and committed funds.
Mr. Chair, if I may, before we move on, what, what are, what are the kind of next steps, because, that you'd like for us to take here when it comes to, or that we should take when it comes to these two sections? Do you want us to provide you with some feedback, modifications, save it for a future meeting, conversation would you envision as the next steps here?
We can save it for a future meeting. It was also, based on the conversations I had, it would have been helpful to have a draft to provide to the planning board to guide their discussions. So it was a conversation I had with the town manager as well. And this is pretty much just off of the recommendations from the ABCC about what we need to implement. And that's all of the feedback that we got from department heads for what a policy and the application process should look like, so.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, so moving on to ARPA, to the town manager, do we have any updates on committed funds since the last time we've met?
No. So the only changes in the spreadsheet that you'll see, I've removed the hundred and one thousand six hundred and forty from, that was part of the budget discussion for the school, is that was in the override amount. So that's back into the uncommitted total, and- And the Boys and Girls Club, the second payment for fiscal '24 was in today's warrant.
Are there any questions about the committed funds?
No. So not on this, but just on general ARPA discussion. After hearing some of the envelope issues with some of the buildings that were discussed during the speaker, during public comment, I think we should probably add those to the list of potential areas we can use ARPA for as well.
Yeah, I'd also add to pay for the, help pay for the external consultant.
Yep.
Tyler.
I was going to cover that once we get into a discussion about the remaining funds too, since we have to allocate it by the end of the year. But before we like put the request out, I do want us to just have an initial conversation about things that we're prioritizing and what we want to set money aside for. So that was one that I wanted to bring up. Selectman Mkey is setting aside funds for the contractor to help triage the issues that we're having with Munis. And another one that I also wanted to bring up as well was the solar panels at the town dump. I know this is something that we've talked about before. And if it's something that we can bring across the finish line this year, I definitely would advocate for that. Personally, I'm really viewing this money as an investment opportunity. So two priorities that I'm looking for is a good return, especially after the year that we had with the override and our budget. So I think that, that project is probably going to have the best return of anything that we invest in. So I'll open it up to other members of the board too. If there's anything that we want to sort of put money aside for, so, Selectman Mkey.
Well, I have a question. Do we have any more clarification on what it means to be the money committed by the end of this year?
I haven't seen anything since that last discussion that they were going to possibly change the definition to under contract or committed. But that's what I would advise the board to take the more conservative approach.
Because, because I do have concerns, we have now less than six months left in this calendar year. And if we're going to, if we're going to look for something to be under contract, I think that has to be factored into some of the decisions too. Because I don't want to lose any of this money.
Mr. Chair, if I throw you to the town manager. So if we were to go out to bid, let's say, on this building, on the projects that we talked about earlier in your report, or the Ritter, and they came in over what we already have allocated, if this board decided to put ARPA money to it, would we have to rebid? Or would that be sufficient to cover the bid?
That would have to be decided before the bid was awarded. Because you need an appropriation available to.
Right, but I mean, right. So if we knew, you opened them, you're like, oh, this is more than we have. But if we committed them, then we could award the bid presumably, right?
Yes.
So it would be, it could be happened quickly.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Is there any other discussion on ARPA at this point?
Yes. So, you know, I don't, so solar panels, let's talk, I want to start there. So I've talked with three different companies about what the process would be to get solar panels on the old dump. The bottom line here is because of the public procurement requirements, that if we have one of these vendors, and they've been extraordinarily helpful to me, but if they come out and very publicly advise us on a scope, then they are ineligible for bidding when we go out to bid. So in other words, the company that helps you define the scope is not a company that's going to be awarded the contract. And the companies I've been speaking to are all interested in getting awarded the contract. And so what I would encourage is an allocation, based on what I've heard, is going to be 25 to 35,000. But I would encourage an allocation of 40 grand to pursue a consultant that could assist us with the solar panels on the, on the old dump. My understanding is that there's a lot of models currently that would allow the town to partner with existing businesses that it basically would be no additional investment beyond the consultant. And that there are many models out there that communities have been successful with, where again, with this partnership, it's like a revenue sharing exercise. There are nonprofits and for-profits that specialize in this municipal space to assist communities with doing stuff like this. But the first step would be, again, to procure them. The other thing is we are aware that, as Selectman Mkey mentioned, I think we probably should get a dollar amount as it relates to the support for the Munis system over the next year. It's, I think that would be incredibly helpful for the board to get.
Yep, so to the town manager, do you want to speak to that?
So I would estimate that it would be between 7,000 and 10,000 for that support for a contractor to come in this year.
For how long?
For this year.
For the whole year?
Mm-hmm.
That's much cheaper than I expected. I was thinking like 80, 90 thousand.
I know. Fiscal year. But this is first specific, so like what just occurred this week, come in for the day. So it was a day's worth of work to help with that process. And given that's periodic throughout the year with actual tax billing and sewer utility billing and demands. So it would be, you know, maybe a day, half day here and there.
So do you anticipate only needing their help with the sewer and the tax bills? Any other part of Munis that you worry about?
We're currently looking at Harpers for payroll services. And I think the accountant and working with the payroll coordinator and HR director, looking at other options as well and making sure those can integrate with software that the police and fire use as well. And looking at employee self-service options. So getting away from that part of the issue that we've been having with Munis for payroll. But 90% of our issues have been tax billing issues.
So conservatively, 15,000, if we were to think that this problem, if we have someone in an agreement, and that agreement can go until the end of 2026, that if we were to allocate.
25?
25. If we were to, no, I was thinking.
A school 25? Okay. Oh, through a doctoration.
Yeah, so if we were to contract with someone until the end of calendar '26 to provide kind of technological consulting services, would it be wise to kind of think in that long-range view and then come up with a dollar amount for the entirety of that period, assuming that there may be a software transition, assuming that there may be other needs that this person could assist with?
I think that's worth exploring. And the finance director did reach out to that contractor today, but we haven't heard back yet. So I can get more firm numbers going forward, but that's just my off the back of a nap in customer.
As far as the solar panels on the dump, you know, I have nothing, I mean, I have solar panels on my house. So they're, I'm totally for solar power. I'm concerned that we've been hearing about this and we had, the board has not been presented anything or any estimate. And now we're looking at, again, this whole committed contracted in six months, and we haven't even started the point of scoping or even putting out the project bid. So we're starting to get really behind the ball of getting to the point where we could do that. Because everything takes longer, especially in a project of this size, longer than you think. So, I mean, I just want to put up a cautionary flag if, as we pursue that. And also, I'd love to know what the return is. I mean, so a return is okay, but what is the return? So I just don't know enough about what is being proposed, what the project is. I just know it's, you know, been referenced several times.
Yep.
If I can add to that conversation, we have, we hire a consultant to do the monitoring of the cap landfill. And if this is something Selectman Jeffries wants to, is taking the lead on, if you, I can put you in contact with that person to discuss what the limitations are of that site.
That'd be great.
Because I know in the past, we spent a lot of money because we were in violation of the EPA and the covering of that dump. And it was an emergency order that we had to spend a lot of money at the time to do. And at that point, it was talked about potentially putting a solar panels. Now, I realize solar technology has changed significantly. But the puncturing of that cap was of prime concern. And who was going to take liability in case you put a system on there and you punctured the cap and all of a sudden, again, you would be in violation of the EPA order. So again, I just, that, that came up then. And I don't know what may have changed there, but that's something we have to be very sensitive to.
The other thing that came up when we just peripherally looked at this was that the substation would have to be upgraded for that area. And that's very costly to do.
For sure. Yep.
In addition to the, the building projects we heard about in public comment tonight, there was also in the town manager report, and I don't know if this is worth considering, so I'll just throw it out there because I noticed it. The hazardous materials cleanup at the Woodruff property came in 85,000 over what we estimated, right? Did I get that right? I don't know if that's worth to put on the list to think about.
Well, I had a question about that. Has it been determined that that is indeed hazardous material?
We have a report from our environmental consultant. So it's not like it's leaking hazardous liquids into. It's the materials themselves, their old farm equipment, and it's considered hazardous, right?
But it's not hazardous or poisonous.
Right.
Hazardous that it's hazardous, like somebody, because it's public land, could get hurt on it.
Right. But I think the board has a copy.
Okay, no, I, we do have the copy.
Read to some of that.
And if I remember, it's expensive to clean up, more so because of the terrain.
Topography, the steepness of the slope.
And it, the stuff is buried, half of it's buried.
Right, it's very steep. It's in a ravine essentially, all the materials. So you have to have the right type of equipment to be able to access it and pull it out. And meet the requirements because it has a order of conditions associated with it due to.
Because that cleanup of that area would be basically equivalent to, close to, not exactly, but close to 30% of what we paid for the whole entire parcel, just to get that material out, so.
Do we, I don't think it's on here, on the cap. I don't think it's on here. Some of the other items that were, that have come up in the past in public comment, the tree survey, I know council on aging, brought forward parking lot. Do we have a list of those, of things that weren't, they were either cut from the budget, not necessarily capital budget? Or is everything on here? Is like the tree survey on here?
No.
I just would like to see, oh, I probably have at home a running list of things that were, that were passed over, for lack of a better term. Though garage floor repairs was something else that came up. DPW garage.
That was on the capital.
Yeah, yeah, that's why I remembered it because I see it.
Right, Mr. Passi has brought up a number of projects that were.
Yeah.
Submitted in the capital planning process that weren't funded.
I don't see the, the tree survey was different. That was on the DPW operating budget, right?
Right, it was in his budget presentation, I think.
Was there anything else in the department budget presentations that we should capture? That would be ARPA appropriate?
I would have to take another look from that lens.
I can only remember the canine, police canine.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Everything else was like a position or extra hours, which wouldn't be appropriate.
Wasn't the canine, that's the comfort dog expenses, right? Well, not, they weren't looking for another canine, they were looking for support for the comfort dog program.
Right.
Correct.
You're right.
Mm-hmm.
I don't, I remember $20,000, that's what, and dog, that's as far as I can remember.
I think we approved the canine program, right?
Yeah.
All right, is there anything else we want to talk about ARPA tonight?
No, I just would like to have some kind of, at least to make some decisions by some certain time. Because I'm getting really, if you can't tell, nervous that it's going to be December sooner than we think.
I was anticipating that we could have most of it allocated by the end of the summer. So going into September.
Does that give everyone enough time to get things under contract?
I think the answer we got last week was that it's about six weeks. So we would have like a couple of months by the end of the year, but.
And if there's a rule change, I mean, there's going to be a public comment period. A lot of communities are going to come out and say, hey, you told us previously that we just had to have it committed. So, I mean, you know, even though, you know, again, there can be a rule change, there is a public process to do that by the federal government. So I'm not, I agree with the town manager that we should work to get as many things in a contract as possible. But I, I think the political reality is, you know, not much is coming out of Washington DC these days.
Also, things get more expensive with time.
All right. So let's move on to discussion on Budget Task Force. So we have a charge. So do we want to go over the charge and then discuss whether or not we're going to vote tonight? All right, so I will go ahead and read it. Budget Task Force Charge. Section, Section 1, General. The Budget Task Force shall be charged with recommending scenarios for a three-to-five-year sustainable fiscal plan for the town of Lunenburg. A sustainable fiscal plan is defined as a financial forecast that uses realistic assumptions for revenue and expenditure growth that allow the town to provide services that meet residents' expectations and meet ongoing expenditure obligations through regularly occurring revenues. Said fiscal plan shall consider, as an example, alternative revenue sources, overrides and exclusions under Proposition 2.5, cuts in service, contracting out of services, as well as other measures. Said fiscal plan shall include both operational and capital budgets for the town. The Budget Task Force shall consult with pertinent departments as it formulates its plan. The Budget Task Force shall present its findings and recommendations to the Select Board, Finance Committee, and School Committee no later than December 31, 2024. Section 2, Tasks and Responsibilities. Collect data on revenue and expenditures, historical trends, and project future estimates based on trends and various assumptions. Benchmark municipal and school performance, programs, expenditures, and revenues with comparable municipalities. Examine potential revenue sources, overrides and exclusions under Proposition 2.5, as well as non-tax and non-override revenue sources in compliance with the town financial policy, including costs, feasibility, potential savings, and other impacts of potential adoption and implementation, cuts in service, contracting out of services, as well as other measures. Evaluate strategies to properly staff municipal and school operations while managing growth of personnel costs. Analyze capital project funding needs and impacts, including long-term, large capital projects. Include both operational and capital budgets in the fiscal plan recommendations. Assess the impact any increased taxes and fees will have on taxpayers and residents, including the tax impact of debt exclusions related to large capital projects under consideration. Section 3, Membership and Meeting. The Select Board does hereby establish the Budget Task Force as a temporary working group consisting of seven members. Select Board, School Committee Representative, Finance Committee Representative, Town Manager, School Superintendent, Town Finance Director, School Director of Administration and Finance. The Select Board shall reserve the right to continue the Budget Task Force after its task is complete in order to adjust the plan due to changing circumstances. The Budget Task Force shall meet at a time and place mutually agreeable to its membership. All duly appointed members shall have full voting power. A quorum shall consist of four members. The election of officers, including a chair, vice-chair, and clerk, shall be by majority vote of the Budget Task Force. The recording of minutes and votes of all meetings as prescribed by open meeting law. Copies of the minutes shall be submitted to the town clerk as prescribed in the town bylaws and according to open meeting law. So is there anything that we want to change? How do we feel about this? Are we willing to create the task force tonight?
I think it would, well, especially given this no later than date, I think it would be imperative to do it. And I am for, I mean, I think the tasks and responsibilities are, are, provide the proper framework while being broad enough to include things, you know, they didn't delineate specific things, but, but umbrella items to discuss. I think that the membership is, you know, fine with me. And I'd like to see it created, yes, Mr. Chair. yes, Mr. Chair.
All right, I'm seeing some nods. Anyone else want to voice their support for creating it? Sleckman Emke?
I think I have, in the past, multiple times.
Yeah, I agree. Sleckman Jeffries?
Um, I think that we're going to have some complications here. I don't know if we have the express authority to appoint members of the School Committee to anything. I, I think that we may want to take the approach of, of if we approve this or when we approve this tonight, of also asking the School Committee to also approve it, or, you know, approving the draft for them to, because we need, when you look at the charter, the School Committee has very specific responsibilities and duties that are different than ours. I, I think that they have expressed a, it seems as if from their meetings, there's, there's a little hesitance, or maybe they're mixed in how I interpret their openness to this idea, but I think that we may want to consider going about this in a way that we create draft language that we are in agreement with, and then feed it through the School Committee for their agreement with it as well, and feed it through the Finance Committee for their agreement with it as well, because, I mean, we're hitting the School Committee, which has a very specific purpose, Finance Committee, which is a legislative committee, and, and I don't want to exceed our authority here in how we go about creating it. So it seems as if the three of us need to agree to create it at the same time in order for it to happen.
So FinCom did vote last week for a representative in the event that we do approve the formation of this task force. So they, Evan Waters was, was voted as the representative from the Finance Committee. I've spoken with a couple of members of the School Committee, starting in the early spring. One member did volunteer to me, at a School Committee meeting, and when I followed up later, I said, you're still in? He said, yes. So there is, in principle, support. They, they discussed it a little bit at last week's School Committee. They did not want to vote formally until there was a charge, but I think in speaking to a few members, there is general support.
The, the only other thing I would add is that, you know, this is, you know, from what I heard in a previous meeting about the, the meeting schedule, or at least the, the breadth of this, I'm a little concerned about the amount of staff, and I think they're critical to it, but I would prefer that, that the meetings occur during normal business hours and not into the evenings due to the burden that it will put on the Town Manager, the School Superintendent, the Finance Director, and the School Director of Administration and Finance, given all the other evening meetings that they already attend.
Yeah, I purposely didn't put a meeting schedule in there because there are going to be people that everyone's got to weigh in, it's got to work, you know? It's going to have to work for everyone, and there probably will be compromise involved by, by many.
Have we ever had a committee that we've appointed school staff like this before?
Board, when we have building committees, it's outlined by charter who comprises them.
Okay.
But generally, Mr. Launzle would be better answering this than me, I've never seen us appoint, require members of the School Committee to be on anything.
So I don't think we're appointing anybody. We're creating a committee that has a slot for the School Committee that, and although it's not said here, I guess if we wanted to add anything, we could say one representative elected by that, that body.
Right.
So, but, so the Finance Committee will choose their own representative, and the, you know, the School Committee, the School Committee will choose their own representative, so we're not appointing them, we're just creating a committee that has a slot open for them.
And?
Again, the only one that's, the only, there aren't many ad hoc committees that get created in general, so, no, I can't think of one that had a School Committee member that wasn't done by either building committee or by charter, like the Town Manager Screening Committee, for instance. So, I hope that answers your question.
It does, thank you. Yeah, I, I mean, I don't, I don't, I think we can go ahead and vote on forming a task force if someone decides not to appoint, or no one on a particular committee steps up and wants to be a representative, that's something we can't control. We have that already on many of our committees.
And I think at the end you have maybe amended to any future meeting, so if we did vote on it and then say someone, some committee was vehemently against being on it, we could always amend it.
Sure.
Well, they don't have to appoint a representative.
Right.
I think it's important to get it moving forward as the dates are quickly approaching.
All right, I'm okay with that, and it sounds like the majority of the board is, so.
Has there been any consideration, given all the comments we heard from the parents during the override, to create positions for the public?
I thought about it, in the interest, interest of time, and to get this going, I thought to have, it would be faster, I mean, it's all public meetings, available for comment and so forth, but I've seen, Westford had two members of the public on their committee, and there's also a size of the committee is a concern too. It gets too large, it becomes unwieldy. So that, that was a, that was a decision I made.
So obviously, you would be our person that we appoint to this task force, right, Sleckman Emke? Would you be interested in being on it?
I am interested, but I would, it should be up for anybody.
So since this was, this is what you put together essentially, I'm willing to defer to you with that decision. I do think I would prefer there to be positions for members of the public on it, but ultimately, I don't feel too opinionated about it either way, so.
Mr. Chair, may we ask the Town Manager any questions or thoughts she has on this?
Yeah, sure.
Um, my only comment, and this is more of a making sure it's clear, a representative could be someone they designate versus a member of the, the board, so I think that should be defined a little better.
Say member instead of representative?
Right, so a representative is, could be construed as.
They appoint anybody.
Yes, right. Versus a member of that.
So you would say, so basically, you would say, you know, one member of the select, one, one representative from the Select Board appointed by them, appointed by the Select Board, you say?
Or a representative who is a member of the Select Board, or.
The language, sorry, go ahead.
We have, we have language in other places.
If you mean it to be a designee, then that's different.
So the language that we have in the charter for the Town Manager Screening Committee is designee.
Right.
So if we wanted to use that, maybe that's consistent with what we do elsewhere, but.
Right, so it'd be, right, well, this is the way it would be typically written, I think that this would include both what you just said too, it would be one representative of the Select Board or designee appointed by it, you know, so appointed, and then it would say the same thing for the School Committee and the same thing for the Finance Committee. So it doesn't have to be somebody who's on those committees, they could choose somebody outside to appoint to it if they wanted, but they get the vote.
Oh, really? That wasn't my intent.
Well, again.
Do we want to do that?
I'm just saying, if you wanted that.
And thought about that.
I, I don't know why anybody with a task force of this, you know, importance, I don't know why they would want to do that, but, I mean, maybe they know somebody who's a whiz at, you know, fiscal calculation, I have no idea. Maybe they have a lot of experience somewhere else, they work in another town. So, that's up for grabs, I, I don't have any strong opinion one way or another about it.
How many meetings a month, how you envision it, Sleckman Emke? How many meetings would you envision a month?
What I've seen for some other towns was twice a month. Keeping in mind it's summer, there is no doubt this is very aggressive, and, and I purposely said findings and recommendations, so it could be a snapshot. It, in all likelihood, will not be a complete picture in that timeframe. I think it's really, that's the, the goal, but this is very aggressive, it's middle of June. I don't even know when the School Committee meets again.
And we don't meet again for three weeks.
And we don't meet for three weeks, yeah.
So either we at least form it, and if people want to participate, they can, or we do nothing, so it seems like we have most members.
And we have the ability to amend it, as, as is written in the document, as, as Member Moore said, that at the end, we can amend it.
Mm-hmm.
Somebody comes up to us with a real complaint, we can certainly amend it.
Right.
If I can add some more comments, I think this is a good idea to put this into place this year, especially with the change in Town Manager position, leading into what could be another contentious budget year, up against financial restraints, so I think this is a good move in that direction to address that and bring everyone to the table in a different format and prior to the budget cycle, to align it with that, with the start of the budget cycle. So I think, overall, I think it's a good move for planning for the town. And this is, we'll tie right into, it's not going to take the place of the financial forecast that's in the charter that's outlined, it's in addition to that, it's using that as a tool for financial planning, and this Budget Task Force can use that for different scenarios as well.
Your support, Heather, comforts me greatly, so thank you.
I think the only thing I'd like to really firm up is, do we want the representatives to be members of the committees, or do we want to have the committee be able to appoint someone else?
I think it makes the most sense for members of the committee to actually be on the task force, but if we want to give them the power to appoint someone else.
Because I think we should, we should write the language.
Well, I'll tell you what, again, because we can amend it, I think that we can say.
Should we leave it open like this?
Well, we should, we should say one representative appointed by it, so they could come to us, because that's, that doesn't designate a member. So if we said one representative appointed by it, they could choose anybody they wanted. And I, so, just by putting those three words, appointed by it after each of those, clarifies the whole thing.
I'm fine with that.
I mean, I don't know why, again, if I was the Finance Committee or the School Committee, I'd want to give it to somebody else, but if they want to.
Yeah, I'm not too opinionated on that, so. All right, other than those edits, is there anything that we want to change in the charge?
The only, and I don't want to belabor this, but the only other thing, I, I've not seen a committee put together, or any kind of public body put together where the Town Manager, the Superintendent, so four employees were actually voting members. Usually, they're ex officio for data, because obviously, that's who we're going to have to go to, to get the data, but having them as voting members, but, of course, if we don't do that, then we have an even number of, no, we still have an odd number, but then you only have three people, so it's just an odd, it's an oddity, I don't, I don't necessarily want to change it, I just want to point it out that usually those positions aren't voting members of, of the groups.
Do you want to change it?
No, no, I just wanted to point it out that it's unusual, but.
It is.
Did we actually?
I don't want to make it a three-member body, because then, then, then we're almost, almost relegated to make, to add another two members, so, you know what, let's keep it, again, I, I'd rather make it expedient that we get it started, because again, with that deadline, it's going to be aggressive, as you said.
I mean, the votes, I'm expecting are just on recommendations, I mean, there's no power.
Right, exactly, no, I, I wanted to say that too. I wanted to say that too, like this board, this task force doesn't have any authority beyond recommending and, and presenting the data and explaining the data. So obviously, the Town Manager and the Superintendent and the requisite bodies, the whole financial department in the town will make their decisions of the budgets the way they see fit, but at least this would give people a bigger picture.
Yeah, all right, I think we all made our decisions on this already, so is there a motion?
I would move that we create the Budget Task Force as written in the charge that was read with the amendments that were suggested under the membership.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. All right, the motion passes.
Do we need to appoint our representative? I know we talked about what it's going to be, but can we do that as well?
We should.
Yes, we do.
So I would nominate Renee Emke to be the Town, the Select Board's representative on the Budget Task Force as just created.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes. All right. So moving on to license agreement to enter and use town property for Shady Point boat launch, so we got some feedback from their attorneys, and Town Council also took a second pass at it, so I will let the Town Manager give us an update on all the feedback that is new since the last time we reviewed it.
Speaking of feedback, we're getting a little feedback on stage to the booth. So in your drive is the revised agreement, and the blue identifies the language from Shady Point's attorney, so the second paragraph, including identified in an attached Exhibit A plan as boat ramp, and under Section One, License Premises, Paragraph B, that changing it to, instead of property, to boat launch ramp as reference on that same exhibit. The additional comments, or let me just highlight specifically, oh, and term, and indemnification, and there was a sentence in insurance, or two sentences, that were also added by the other attorney, Shady Point's attorney. Town Council specifically called out the Section Six, and for conduct of licensee, that the town, by agreeing to this section, is essentially agreeing not to permit its invitees, which would be its residents, to conduct operations or businesses on the licensed premises, and are we in a position to enforce that and monitor that?
No.
So, correct. So that's, was one of his comments. Insurance, is that, his main concern there is that we would definitely want to confer with our insurance company, because this is committing us to keep the licensed premise insured with multiple types of policies, and also to name Shady Point as an additional insured.
I mean, so, if I may comment, on a COI, you know, when you're looking at the specifics of insurance, I mean, this is basically just following the form. I, I think that, you know, vehicle liability should be removed, be in its entirety, you know, and I think that C, workers' comp should be removed in its entirety. That we maintain that already for the town, but I don't think we need to do it for the specific premises, and we don't plan on having any town vehicles there, but I think it's reasonable for us to carry copres of general liability insurance, and the Commonwealth most insurance policies, as I know you know, are, you know, generally up to, you know, for stuff like this, two million, and an umbrella of about five, those aren't usually too costly of policies, but do you have specific insurance recommendation?
I would like to confer with Maya on this.
Okay.
Because this is a very unique situation with inviting residents onto private property that we have an agreement with, and then we're liable for.
Yep, okay.
And termination, just that, I think we discussed this previously, twenty-four hours to lengthen that to a longer period of time.
Like, fourteen days, thirty days, I mean, if they're feeling a liability, I'm sure they want it to be quick, but what's reasonable from our view to communicate that the property's no longer accessible? reasonable from our view to communicate that the property is no longer accessible?
One to two weeks.
I would probably, yeah, seven days, you know, at the very least, seven days.
I was going to say seven days, but if we feel like.
But 14 is fine, yeah. To the point of the conduct, and I understand Town Council's point about us monitoring it, but, you know, there's also nothing, I mean, we can give instructions under this, and I guess we're not permitting it. If somebody does it, doesn't mean you're permitting it. As long as we don't condone it, or we don't promote it, you know, I don't, I don't see, they're not saying we have to monitor everybody, they're not saying that. They're just saying you can't, we don't permit it. Well, if it's brought to our attention, then we won't permit it. I mean, we don't permit people to shoplift, that's why there's laws against it. So, you know, the point is that, I think they just, we have to be clear to our residents that, you know, if somebody brings it to our attention that they're doing it, maybe they lose privileges or something. I don't know how they're going to check that somebody is even from Lunenburg, but if they have some kind of checklist, then they should, they should probably ask for ID, you know, some kind of ID to show that, and then they can have their own blacklist if they want. I don't think that would be, I don't think that's a huge obstacle to the agreement, as far as I'm concerned. I mean, I also don't see it terribly likely.
I mean, I think essentially he's pointing out, we are the responsible party for inviting any private residents who aren't part of Shady Point there. So that if there's illegal activity or anything that's being conducted there, then that we're agreeing to, that we're the licensee. So our residents are operating under this license agreement through the town.
I understand the point, but I mean, have we, I mean, have we discussed this point with them?
No.
First of all, they're the ones who offered the opportunity. It's not in the town's interest to get, take any liability for doing this. I mean, the other ones who offered, hey, you could use our property. Well, again, I can't, people, you know, people's kids do things in stores and restaurants that they weren't supposed to do. I mean, you can't monitor people, and you can't, you know, everybody doesn't have ankle bracelets, so you can find out exactly what they're doing 100% of the day. This has got to be known by the kind of license they're issuing.
And they're already allowing, I mean, people are using the boat launch now without us, so.
I mean, it should be, if anything, the conduct of license, maybe, maybe it shouldn't be saying that, is that any invitees of the licensee that are found in violation of this should be, have a revoked privilege. I mean, they should, I don't know, if people, if you pay to get in, if you're a paid member of Shady Point, do they have cards, or they have something that identifies you as a paid member? You know, they should have some kind of membership that they can just revoke, and you just can't get in anymore.
Is it worth having Shady Point into our next meeting to discuss these points rather than going back and forth?
Well, more than, more importantly than anything.
I don't know all our processes and putting on additional administrative duties onto them when they're offering this to the town.
Right. No, I appreciate Adam bringing it up, and I think it's certainly a topic of important discussion. But I think having them here, because they've been very amenable, and maybe they'll, maybe they can clarify, at least in a recording of this meeting, what they mean by that and what they think we should be doing. I understand they want to cover themselves, I get that. But, you know, they have to take advantage, like, we're not starting a program that we have to, again, like you just said, administer and devote people to monitor. That's not going to be helpful to anybody.
On both sides.
Right. Right.
All right, so, yeah, we can invite them in to discuss with them in our next meeting.
And try to get comments back from our insurance company by then as well.
Generally, though, I think the agreement is good. I understand exactly what they're trying to do. You know, they don't want someone to come on their property and then be liable, and they seem to have protected themselves. You know, and to Mr. Alonso's point, you know, this weakens, I think the language and conduct of licensee is okay. We're certainly not going to encourage anyone to come there and do bad things.
All right, anything else we want to talk about, about the agreement? All right, so moving on to review draft of board committee handbook. So this is the handbook that the town manager wrote, and we reviewed a couple of months ago. She's made some edits to it, and there are also some points that she brought up that we might want to look into adding. So I'll let the town manager talk about what she's added to it and what she thinks that we could add as well.
So since the last time we discussed this, I really just wanted to keep this on the board's radar, as far as something I think would be useful for boarding committee members coming on board. I've heard it from different people, as far as knowing what processes to follow, who to contact, different resources. So since that last meeting, the links should be updated. The, I added a section on, well, under oath of office, what those office hours, the town clerk is, so people are aware of that. Town email account that everyone is assigned, that's appointed to a board or committee, commission is assigned a town email account, and that information is sent through the IT department on how to access that account.
Well, I know my, I know my wife is a new member of the Lunenburg Cultural Council, has not received any indication that she has an account. So who should she go to?
First, to Annie.
And, okay, all right. And I'm sure other members of other committees may also be in this boat, I don't know.
Yeah, separate discussion, but we're going to be looking at doing periodic audits of accounts, which we tried to do, but without a network administrator right now.
Makes it difficult.
The next section that has a major date was the posting and scheduling of meetings, the location of different meeting places, because that's sometimes a mystery as well of where that boarding committees can meet. And I think that was all the major updates. But I think additional resources would be, like, for instance, this week, we had a request on letterhead, or last week, there should be a sample letterhead that they can adopt, where they can change the, the chair can change the list of the members on that letterhead.
One of the things that was talked about, talking about email, again, are there, you know, if somebody wants to, I'll just use my example, as a chair of the capital planning committee, is there a group email that we say that I can just have, say, capital planning committee, and then when it changes, that group email, group list changes, so that I can just send it to one place? Because, and I'm sure that's true of any board. I mean, when the membership changes, if you have to keep adding everybody, you forget, and you, like, I accidentally chose an old agenda that had an old member on it. When I posted it, they sent it back to me, said, "Well, sorry to inform you, I'm still no longer on the committee." So, I mean, it would be nice to get group emails that, that people who have an internal email, not that's open to the public necessarily, but group emails, and I know you can do this in my office 365.
You can do that, yes.
So you just restrict them to people using them internally, but it would make things so much easier.
Yeah. I believe to do it externally, or to create like a distribution list, it takes up a license to do that.
Right, right.
But an internal.
Internally, right.
And actually, if you create a SharePoint Drive under a name, it automatically assigns an email address to that.
Right.
So like Finance Committee.
Which would be nice, yeah. The other question is about these locations for meetings, and this came up at the last master plan meeting, which was at Smokestack Roasters. And somebody asked the question, "This isn't a town property, is this an okay place to have a meeting?" And I was like, hmm, they bring up a good point. So, I mean, economic planning had a meeting offsite on a private property, too. So I'm just wondering if there, because generally, it's supposed to be a municipal property, I thought.
Yeah, we have a bylaw that says that town meetings should occur.
Right, I believe so, too, yeah. So we should probably remind people of that.
If it's just like a, not a posted meeting of a board, like, if it's just like a gathering event or a forum, I think that would be different.
Well, these two, well, the two I just mentioned were actually, well, the one wasn't a meeting of the economic development, it was just an event hosted by them. So that's really, that would be different. But the master plan was an event hosted by the master planning committee.
All right. So is there anything else that we want to add to the handbook that we can think about right now?
My, no, however. I do think that it would be wise to float this around to many other boards and committees and ask them for feedback or things that they think is missing that should be added and to allow that comment period.
Yeah, I think that would be good.
Is it in here how to book a room for a meeting? Book one of these locations?
Yes. Well, it says who to reach out to for each of the rooms that are available.
Oh, town clerk, okay.
I'm also assuming that the remote participation policy will be formatted in the way that the rest of the handbook is, because right now it's.
Ignore the formatting.
I basically just did.
And I want to point out, you had an earlier discussion tonight about the IT device.
IT policy, yeah.
At the very end of this is the electronic. So I didn't want to speak out of turn if I was incorrect, but when that policy was created, it was segregated into employee and boarding committee members, so that is there.
There we go, yeah.
Specific to boarding committee members.
So it looks like it's word for word, if I'm.
Right, I think it just, yeah, sorry, it's boarding committee. Zoom would be another thing to be added to this.
You should put a determination in here, then, that when somebody's no longer a member of a board, committee, or commission, that all their access to their email would be limited. Right, whatever we choose, we should put it in here, too. To whatever the chair wrote that we eventually approved for the employee one, we should adopt it here as well.
All right, anything else on the handbook for tonight? All right, so moving on to current business, the first thing on the agenda is discuss select board goals for fiscal year 2025. I wasn't intending on actually talking too much about it tonight, but just introducing it onto the agenda so that it's in people's minds and so that we can start brainstorming what we want to focus on this year. So I just put it on there for that reason.
So are we going to have a workshop at a future meeting?
Yeah, that was my intention. In July, I was thinking that we could actually come prepared with some things that we want to focus on, and then really narrow down and create the goals for the year.
For the July 9th meeting or for later in July?
Yeah, we can put it on for July 9th. I didn't pick a specific date, but.
That might be a full meeting.
Yeah, all right, then, no. The meeting after that.
16th?
Yeah, okay, so we'll go with that. All right, review draft financial policies. I'm going to let Heather present this.
Thank you. So I've been repeating over the course of this year, I had applied for a community compact grant and received through Division of Local Services that they would update and provide all new financial policies as per their template and best practices. So that's what's in your drive. I'm not looking for any action tonight, just an introduction of these to the board. The next step I would take would be to disseminate them to the finance committee and to any other boards impacted, especially there's an overlay policy to the board of assessors for that one specifically, and then further feedback to the, back to the select board on any of them. Are there any questions?
Yeah, this, I saw this, this is a pretty hefty document, was it like 99 pages?
Yeah.
I can't wait to see how it ends.
I kind of said that to you earlier in the year, that it would be comprehensive.
Right, no, no, it's good, it's good to have it all in place.
Exceeds what we currently have in place.
Just not often that I see drafts that are this luminous.
Yeah. What I do like about it is the references at the end of each policy, referring back to where it gets the authority from mass general law that's referenced, so.
Nice.
Any questions for the town manager at this point?
What is the, so what is our, are we going to do these in chapters? I mean, are we just going to sit down and just hammer out 99 pages?
Might be a goal for the year.
Something of this size that is obviously very containerized, we should be able to just say, okay, let's look at these next two chapters, and we just chip away at it over time. That way, we know how to prepare for the meeting.
Yeah, I mean, that makes the most sense to me. All right, anything else we want to talk about on this tonight? All right, so moving on to town manager fiscal year '24 vacation payout request. So the town manager has two vacation days that she's requesting us to pay out for the end of the fiscal year. Anything else you want to say on that?
No, I was unable to.
Pretty standard and pretty sensible.
Yep.
I move to approve the town manager's request to pay out two remaining vacation days for FY '24.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, so moving on to minutes, we do have minutes to review for.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
On minutes for meetings, I'm not here, I just don't take any action on them, I assume?
You can abstain from the vote, you don't have to, if you.
The official nature is you don't have to, but it is customary that if you weren't there, that it'd be hard for you to approve them, for accuracy, which is what we do. But by law, you are allowed to vote on them.
Thank you.
All right, so everyone else, have we reviewed the minutes?
I have.
I missed the meeting, so I'm going to abstain.
Okay, do you want more time to review it? Or is there a motion?
Did you want more time to review it yet?
No, no, I mean, I was absent from the meeting, so, I mean, it was from October.
Oh, I see.
So.
I would move that we approve the minutes of October 17, 2023. And as an aside, Mr. Chair, before we have a second, do we have any?
Plan.
Yeah, well, estimate for when we're going to be caught up?
No, it is something that I intended to bring up at some point.
Okay.
But I haven't yet, so.
I've had a conversation with the executive assistant about having a goal of one a week, one set of minutes a week, because I think that's attainable. And I've asked someone else that does minutes for another committee, Danielle Marr, to assist with getting caught up as well, so, but she's also handling multiple other boards. So between those two things, that's what I'm trying to address the backlog there.
Okay.
And not as a criticism to Annie, but she has been, you know, kind of working with planning and has been doing a lot more than just the executive function.
Correct, yeah.
So it is understandable.
Yeah, pointed out in the last meeting, like, she has been taking on.
I'm just concerned that if we're only back in October, that if we do, if she's, goal is to do one a week, that makes, that means we'll catch up one a month, because every week we have a meeting except for one week, so.
Except for the next two. Except for the next two weeks.
Well, we'll catch up three this time.
Make it really long in the spring. I think we had some extras in there, a few months.
All right, so was the motion seconded?
Seconded.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
I abstain.
Any abstentions?
Oh, any extensions, that's right.
I abstain.
So, it's...
Three, zero.
Three, zero, and then two extensions. All right, warrants. I believe there are warrants.
When we do the warrants, can we just clarify which ones are payroll versus accounts payable?
So this is payroll. And the amount of $1,959.29. This is accounts payable in the amount of $682,541. And then this is accounts payable in the amount of $664,692.38. This is part of that, I didn't pass it. Any action items?
Um, I have one, if we could get an update on the Flat Hill detention basin, the stat, you know, they were going to do the cleanup?
That, that the board was sent correspondence on that, that they've been there twice now, the...
Recent?
Yes.
I saw something from a resident asking for something recent.
My apologies, then, it was sent by the DPW director. So the company that was through McCarty, that was hired to do that, they've been out twice to do it, but it's been too wet and murky to actually do the survey.
Wow.
They're waiting for drier conditions.
Okay.
After this week, maybe it's...
Yeah. Did you, I think I missed one.
Any other action items? All right, committee reports.
School committee met last week, they reorganized, Mr. Layton is now the chair, Mr. Skolnbrini's vice chair, and Ms. Archibald is clerk, and Stormwater Task Force is meeting Thursday.
Who's the chair?
Brian, Mr. Layton.
Oh, Brian, okay. FinCon met, but I have not watched, I was not there and I did not watch the recording yet.
I don't have any either. All right, so upcoming meetings, we won't be meeting for the next three weeks, so our first meeting in July is going to be on July 9th, the second will be on July 16th, and then the third on July 23rd. Public comment, are there any public comments from the town manager?
None tonight, thank you.
Are there any public comments from the public?
Good evening, everybody, John Bowen, 162 Highland Street. In continuation from last week, as I said from the opera funding, that they could be paid a consult firm for a review of the cemetery's needs. That's only a $450 to $500 expense through the Cemetery Association of Massachusetts. Mr. Daley and your former sheriff, Guy Glotus, from Worcester County, happened to operate that facility and area. The consultation and development of a cemetery corporation is only $3,500, and that's to get everything lined up with the state, including the 501(c)(13), so we don't have a confusion, c3 and c13 are two different things. There's no conflict of interest, as parroted by Nancy Floschiosko, the cemetery needs three union workers to be able to operate that cemetery because they need skilled and trained individuals to work it to accomplish the minimal needs. But they need an annual perpetual care budget of $350,000, which I already did the numbers, and as it stands, conservatively, $750,000, okay, of a budget needed for additional items. Ms. Moore, last week, you said something about appointments as liaisons should be appointed to boards so not, so that no impropriety can be inferred by a board member acting as a de facto member of any other board, like, no offense, Mr. Jeffries had this conversation with you, that it can appear that when you're assisting, that it could look like you're a de facto member. I'm confirming that in just that particular statement with some conversation we had with regard to some help that you've given to the cemetery commission. I'm trying to be helpful here, a liaison is helpful, okay? Your helpfulness has been a little bit borderline, however, you know, nobody's, I'm not saying that you've done any impropriety, and I think we've had that discussion. Liaisons of any boards at any time should be a non-biased member, as in the manner of Mr. Alonso's approach to questioning things here on this board. He acts, he asks questions, he does not sit there and give advice, just to listen and to inquire, that is a liaison's behavior. Also, I must stress that it be understood that Mr. Passios's involvement with the cemetery commission fixing pumps and doing other things is a biased individual from the finance committee if they choose to appoint him as a liaison, okay? He is involved with them on a weekly basis and communication with the DPW on a weekly basis, as he has mentioned here, and has independently worked for the cemetery commission as well. And if that, any approval from the finance committee for a liaison for that position should not be Mr. Passios, and I stress this board not to allow it. That being said, you made a discussion tonight, of which you said something about solar spending. The cemetery's wall, of which they got a proposal and presented to you, was done with contractors who were interested in the bid. You made it very clear here that these contractors want to bid a job, you cannot have a consultant come in and then also be able to bid the job. So just overall, those are just a couple of things that I just wanted to mention, just to follow up. I just want you to be able to listen and find another approach. Tax money is not going to fix your cemetery problem. Condemning DPW workers, condemning the cemetery superintendent, Todd Holman, okay, or Bill Bernard, and how they're handling it is not the answer. And that's the answer that you get from your cemetery commission. Just read their upcoming minutes for this meeting, okay, that they're going to have. I just want you to just keep in mind, okay, that you can't condemn people to get work done. You have a collective bargaining agreement come up. Two more workers, you'll have a perfect cemetery, but you'll also be paying an additional $180,000 to $200,000 in tax money to be able to hire that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. All right, I see someone raising their hand on Zoom, that is just a phone number, starting with 978. I think they're still muted.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Rogers.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes, Dave Rogers, 82 Highland Street. First thing is, I heard through the grapevine, and I don't know if it's true enough, but some people were talking about the leak on the roof of the Passios building, specifically in the area where the TV cameras are and the electronic equipment. And if that's true, then I hope that somebody's going to put the, like the national flag of Florida, the blue top, over them, because when it starts to rain in October, we'll be in deep dew, okay? The second thing I have is with regard to the, the, oh yeah, the budget task force, I really disagree with the consensus that you folks came up with, and I offer this for your consideration. It's very difficult to get people to join committees, and here you're going to try and get seven people or five people or whatever. But all of this information that they would be formulating is available to them with the existing committees that we have specifically, the school committee, the finance committee, the select board, all they have to do, any person, is to go to those meetings and ask any questions that you want. So I don't see the need for yet another committee, but that's just my own personal perspective. The other troubling issue I have is that I understand that the personnel committee has resigned in total, and I'd like to know if that's true and what the story is there. And that is all the notes I have. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rogers, and I will respond to that last question. Yes, the personnel committee did resign. I don't know if you want to speak to exactly the reasons that they gave in their letters, because I don't recall really much information in them, but yes, they did resign, and we do need people to volunteer for the personnel committee as soon as possible so that we can get that up and running.
Mr. Chair, the official reasons provided in those resignation letters, as I recall, was just personal matters, they were thankful for the time that they had, but that they needed to focus on other things in their personal lives.
Okay, thank you. All right, are there any other public comments this evening on Zoom? All right, so we are going to enter executive session, sorry, oh, never mind. Are there any public comments from the board?
Yes. I just want to clarify something that was said in public comments from the public. So, you know, certainly I can't thoroughly explain all of public procurement in a comment, but there is a difference between going to a vendor and asking them for a scope versus going to a vendor and asking them for a cost estimate for budgeting purposes. And so I would just differentiate that there is a difference, and my understanding was that the, what was made reference to with the sewer commission, that they were not pursuing a scope as much as they were pursuing a cost, and that they have their own scope. Just want to offer that clarification.
Any other public comments from the board? All right, so we are going to enter into executive session, and then after that, we will go back to open session. We are discussing and potentially voting on extending the town manager's contract as it expires at the end of the month, and we will need to extend it until her announced resignation of August 4th. So, yes, thank you very much.
Do you want me to read the motion, or do you want...
No, I'll read the motion, but I did have a question first regarding the broadcast. Are we going to go back on the broadcast when we come back to open session, or are we just ending it now?
I guess it's up to the board and whether, how long you think it's going to take and whether you want the booth to stay for that. The requirements of the law is just that when you come back into open session, that anyone can enter the room, and this is then an open meeting.
If I may offer an opinion, Mr. Chair, the way that you posted this agenda with the amendment was that we would enter back into an open session.
Yes.
And that we would, it looks as though we're essentially going to announce the vote on the extended contract terms for the town manager. And so with that, I would assume that we would have the booth remain, and that we get muted, and that we come back into executive session.
Okay, so if that's possible, then I definitely would prefer that as well. All right, so I will go ahead and make the motion now. So I move to enter into executive session and to reopen open session after existing executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30, Section 21a, Paragraph 3, to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel.
Second.
This will be a roll call vote, Selectman Emke.
Aye.
Selectman Alonso?
Aye.
Selectman Moore?
Aye.
Selectman Jeffries?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. All right, we are in executive session. All right, we are in executive session. All right, looks like we are back in open session, so we are going to move on to vote on extension of contract for town manager until August fourth, twenty twenty-four. Is there a motion?
I move to extend the two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-four employment agreement between the town of Lunenburg and the town manager Heather Lemieux until August the fourth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no, the motion passes. All right, and that's it for tonight, so thank you all for tuning in.
Motion.
I know, I was just going to.
Sorry, sorry for interrupting, Mr. Chair.
I just wanted to remind people at home that our next meeting is going to be on July ninth, that's all. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. It is nine fifty-four PM, and we are adjourned. Have a good night.